Good evening, I'll call this meeting to the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. God of grace and glory, source of wisdom and strength, guide the work of this council, prosper the well-being of this city, protect those who provide services to all of our citizens, help all who are sick with your healing spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to comply, I'm the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, united in the reasonable liberty and justice for all.
Is over the roll, please.
Kerry Hogg, word one.
Here.
Jay Steph, word two.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, word three.
Yes.
Lindsay McDaniel, word four.
Same time.
Diane Tate, word five.
Here.
Taff Rinn, word six.
Present.
Nobody ever asks if I'm here or not, but I guess we're here. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes of our April 6th meeting. And council, you've had these well in advance, and tonight had an opportunity to look them over, and that would be the chance to make any edits, corrections, and if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have, Mr. Riggs, you have the first two items for us this evening, please.
Yes, Mayor, we got bids on residential meters, and this is to buy 200 to replenish our stock, and the total cost is $16,454.
Okay. Any discussion on this item, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please.
Yes, Mayor, this is a, we're being required to put excess flow valves on commercial, new commercial installations, so this'll implement a $5 a month maintenance charge for anybody who gets a excess flow valve.
Okay. No changes since the last reading?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on this item, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Lovell, you have the next couple items, please, sir.
Congratulations.
That'd be the media ordinance?
Yes. The first one is, y'all had the first reading on last council meeting, it is a media production ordinance, which will basically require film and TV crews coming into the community to file a permit, so the city and its emergency staff knows where they are going. If they're on city right-of-way, they will have to pay a fee to go on there. It also has insurance requirements ranging from $1 to $5 million, depending upon the type of filming activity. In other words, if explosives are involved, $5 million; if they're just taking pictures, a million. There are no fees or insurance requirements for, say, college or individual movies or films that are being done, and it is recommended for y'all's approval, and it has gone through the tourism board for their review and consideration, since they do almost all the initial coordination with all these activities.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Mayor, I forgot to ask Keith this. The last movie we had in the Goldum Courthouse, we had Irwin Street locked off. Anyway, public safety was out there an awful long time, one whole day for sure.
Yes.
Is there reimbursement for our public safety in this?
Well, there's not, there is reimbursement for it, but what normally happens, and if the chief or fire chief won't to talk about this, I'll let them, but basically, they normally have off-duty personnel that they arrange to operate and manage those, that they pay the normal rates for the police department. However, if the fire department is involved, there's, and explosives are involved or power techniques, they normally have a fire marshal that is designated on site, which they do compensate the fire department for that individual being there.
That's correct. They're all off-duty officers. They're usually paid directly by the filming company, and it varies on the rates depending on traffic, or just for security, or if we need to make, we have a lot of off-duty officers, we need a manager out there to manage the scene, so it's based on that, they pay directly to the officer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Any other questions or discussion? Not a motion.
Motion to approve.
Say it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Mr. Lovell.
The next item is, if y'all may recall, around December of last year, we approved a incentive agreement with both the county and the development authority in Cartersville for the new Shaw Create Center. They ended up needing a little more acreage out there, so what this amendment does is adds about four more acres to that project that they're building out there. It is recommended for your approval, and has previously been approved by the commissioner and the development authority.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on case Z-17-02.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, this property has been properly posted and advertised, appears to be no conflicts of interest, and we have reviewed it based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. This particular rezoning is actually a changing condition. The property at 640 North Tennessee Street is presently zoned MU, multiple use. When it was rezoned in 2001, there were several enumerated conditions placed on the zoning for that. One of them was to not allow multifamily. Another one that also affects it would be a density no more than that of R-15. They're looking to remove those conditions that were placed on the MU zoning back in 2001. The property has R-15, RD, R-7, and MU surrounding it. The applicant is proposing a 72-unit multifamily housing development on the property. It is part of, or being financed through low-income housing tax credits, and with that, the Department of Community Affairs, Georgia Institute, the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Program provides extra credit for their application because the city was part of that program. We have a couple of different projects going through the process right now. This one does not meet zoning because it is actually conditioned to multifamily at this point. With that, individual departments that review these applications for the city have reviewed them. One of the difficult comments came from Water and Sewer, from Meyer Sting, they've been working with the Water and Sewer Department to determine capacity of the lines in this particular area or from this particular site. With that, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, and the Planning Commission did recommend denial of this application.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Thank you, Randy. I'll open up a public hearing for file case Z-17-02. Anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And if you would, please, sir, your name and address for our clerk.
Good evening. My name is Gary Hammond. I reside at 1836 Withmere Way in Dunwoody, Georgia, and my office is at 7,000 Peachtree Dunwoody Road in Sandy Springs, Georgia. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. I am very excited and honored to present the application we have in works to build a 72-unit apartment complex at 640 Tennessee Street. I specialize in using the Department of Community Affairs allocated resources for state and federal tax credits. I've been doing that for 17 years in the development business, and I've been in business in Georgia for 23 years. This will be a joint venture to include another company called Resource Housing Group. They've been in business for 31 years in Georgia. They're a Atlanta-based nonprofit corporation, and together, we've developed approximately 27 different communities across the southeast. Most of my experience is in Georgia. The proposal is for 72 apartment units, of which some of the information that I'm going to give you tonight differs slightly than what was given at the Planning Commission hearing. As we learn more information, market study results come in, et cetera, we work to improve the application and it serving the needs of the local community. At present, we're proposing to build 58 of those 72 at a set aside of 50% to 60% of area median income. The program was designed to provide competitive, high-quality housing to working families, and that 50% to 60% represents in 2016 area median incomes, an income range of approximately $19,000 to $40,500 per year, per household, assuming that the household sizes are one to four persons. If the household sizes was larger, then the median income would go up. As area median income changes, as it did in 2017, it's actually higher, the households can make more money, and the landlord can charge additional rent so long as the market accepts those rental charges. And if households improve their situation over time, they get better jobs, they get raises, et cetera, they're not discriminated against, they're not evicted from the housing, if when they applied and moved in and were approved, they met income requirements, but then later on were over income limits. 12 of the 72 units are one bedrooms, and the rent range is approximately from $500 to $700 per month, per unit. 36 are two bedrooms with a rent range of $600 to $800 per unit, and 24 are three bedrooms with a rent range of $685 to $900 per unit. And those rents are below what we could charge a maximum allowable under the program, and the higher rates that I gave are the unrestricted market units. So 14 units would have no prohibition on household income, they could be resided in by anybody, teachers, firemen, police officers, et cetera. DCA allocates these limited resources on an annual basis. We compete as developers for those resources. We tend to specialize in this program because there's a very high barrier to entry to understand the program and the ongoing compliance requirements. It's a very burdensome program, but it's very rewarding for folks like myself who specialize in it because we're providing phenomenal housing for working families. DCA also performs the compliance audits on a semi-annual basis, or once every two years, not to be confusing, and that includes a physical needs assessment and also compliance with the rent and income restrictions. And if they find anything in the property is deficient, is worn out, needs to be replaced, they cite the owner, and the owner has to fix it. The market, you're very fortunate in Cartersville, the market is phenomenal right now. The market study preliminary results came in, they surveyed 1,400 conventional units and are fully occupied. It's 99.7% occupancy in unrestricted conventional market units. There's two low-income housing tax credit communities, Etowah Village and Somerset Club, they're 99.1% occupied, and they projected a demand for 2,000 additional rental units, primarily at the income ranges that I'm proposing for this project. So, you know, right now, things are very, very good, and there's a demand for this housing. The site is not without its challenges. Traffic, you know, if I were you, I'd be asking about traffic. The rule of thumb is about six trips per day, per unit, so that would be 430 trips in a day, and if you spread that out, that's an average of 18 per hour. And obviously, there's going to be some peak trip hours in the morning, coming home, depending on shift work. In my opinion, somewhere around 40 to 50 trips per hour on North Tennessee Street, and I've driven it when traffic is heavy, and they may have to wait, but I don't believe that a traffic study would be required and that, or that the DOT would deny a permit for a curb cut, which we'll have to do with the state. Sewer, apparently, there's not a treatment issue. The sewer plant can treat the affluent, but there might be capacity issues in the line, and we're studying the northern lines, where we would flow north because the southern lines are in worse shape. And we've engaged a recommended environmental company to place monitoring equipment in like three different routes that we could go to determine if infiltration with rainwater events, et cetera, are making it such that the capacity in the lines are not sufficient. And unfortunately, I don't think that you'll have the benefit of that data by March, excuse me, May 4th when you vote, but we will have it by the time we apply to the DCA, and we won't apply to the DCA if it's not a situation we can overcome. Our engineer says that, you know, there's upgrades, we could line the pipes, we could do things to stop the infiltration and overcome that issue. And then, the final development issue we're looking at is storm water. Right now, the site sheet flows in a couple of different directions, and there's no defined channel. So if we put storm water ponds on our property, as people do to hold it to the pre-existing condition, there's no defined channel to release that water. So we're believing that we're going to have to pipe it to an existing storm sewer system, probably at Summit and Beaufort Street, and I'll be required to secure easement from private parties to be able to do that. But we will design the project to comply with all best management practices in being engineered so that everybody accepts it through Cartersville. Thank you very much.
Question, Mr. Hammond, the, I heard you say you were, you don't believe the Georgia DOT is going to require you to do either a traffic study or deny a curb cut based on, I guess, just your experience in this area, or?
Well, I'm not an engineer, but in talking to my engineer and talking to city folks, that the number of trips that are generated wouldn't trigger a traffic study because it's pretty obvious what the trips are, and that the DOT wouldn't deny a commercial driveway opening at the frontage on Tennessee Street. If you approve the application to go forward or remove the conditions of the zoning, obviously, any developer, you know, not just myself, is going to have to overcome that with the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Okay. And adjacent property owners, any feedback from them relative to this?
I received none.
And I would like to point out on the site plan that we're using the most stringent setback and buffer requirement in the code on the southern property line, the western boundary of 50 feet, so it would be a 25-foot planted buffer plus a 25-foot setback. So, in my opinion, will completely shield this property from the adjoining residential property owners on the southern and western property lines.
Any chance you have any photographs or anything you can bring to council prior to our vote of properties that you've developed that are still up and running today and have been running for 10, 15 years?
Absolutely.
So we can see how they're maintained?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And I've been in the business, and it's a program that ties you to a long-term ownership, so the very first projects that I built are starting to come out of compliance, and I've sold one in Acworth called The Peaks at Bells Ferry not too long ago, but this property I'll be involved with for the next 20 years, if I'm successful.
So you do have a requirement for how long you have to own it and manage it?
It's, in the case of the 2017 application requirements, it's a 15-year mandatory with a five-year selection, optional selection, which we'll choose because we're incentivized to choose it. So it'll be 20 years. And for 20 years, it'll be subject to, you know, oversight by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. After 20 years, it tends to convert to market.
And I'm sorry, I was listening. How many units did you say now y'all were looking to do?
72, about 12 units an acre.
What is the tax abatement?
Zero. There's no allowance in the Georgia code for ad valorem tax abatement whatsoever, so we'll, we don't like to pay property taxes any more than anybody else, but we have to pay our fair share, and we will work with the assessor on a fair market value conclusion that we think is fair.
Mr. Hammond, what exactly is the acreage that you're able to work with when you take away the Georgia Power line?
You know, I don't know exactly. It's 5.9 acres in total, and I would say that about 30% is consumed in the Georgia Power line easement. We believe that we'll be permitted to...
The survey, I believe, says we're going to 509, it's the Georgia Power line, 50 acres.
So in designing the site plan, we obviously kept all the buildings outside of the easement limits, and we also kept the residential buildings outside of any fall zone of an existing pole, but we are proposing to use the easement area for some parking and some detention, stormwater detention, which we'll have to get the approval of Georgia Power to do.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll continue the public hearing relative to file case Z-17-02. Anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing, we'll take this up for our second reading and public hearing and a final vote at our first meeting in May. Randy, next item? No, that's not you, it's Lily. Ms. Reed, please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am coming before you to request an amendment to our existing festival zone ordinance. As stated in the work session, I took into account the conversations that we'd had at a previous meeting, and incorporated council's feedback into this request. What I am asking for is the additional option of designating our festival zone with signage or fencing, so we have the option of using either or depending on the nature and capacity of the event. I have added some language to Section 2 around entrance criteria, designating the event manager who reserves the right to remove persons from the event who are in violation of posted entrance criteria. This would be to help mitigate any challenges that would come from removing the wristband requirement for festivals, but of course, we would leave in place all of the wristband or designation requirements for alcohol consumption. So that is very much firmly going to stay as it is in our existing ordinance. The only other change that I've had is to tighten up some language regarding the way in which the festival manager is designated for our festival zones, so I have stated here that the mayor and city council and/or the DDA acting as their agent have the authority to designate a festival manager, and then we also have the right to approve or deny vendors and merchants, but also retaining the right for city council to have the ultimate say over anything that goes on in our festival zone apropos to fencing, merchants, vendors, things of that nature.
Any questions or discussion? All right. Thank you very much. This was the first reading, we'll take this up for final consideration, our first meeting in May. And Mr. Jones, you've got an ordinance as well, first reading.
Good evening, everyone. We have a car wash recycle ordinance for you tonight. This is a requirement of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. Essentially, it will require all new tunnel car washes built after 6/1 of this year to comply with a 50% recycle requirement. I've spoken to several people who operate these type of businesses, and they have assured me that this will not place any additional burden on them as the equipment manufacturers now include this option in their standard equipment package. So if any of us want to go into that business, we're buying that with the equipment. So would recommend your approval. This is, has been a requirement for a number of years, and it's something that we do need to do in order to stay in the good graces of the district. This could negatively affect our permit applications and interactions with other regulatory bodies, so would recommend your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Bob on this item? Thank you, Bob. We'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. I know you've got, I think, four other items, so go ahead and start with those, please, sir.
I believe next up is Indian Mounds Road. This is a water main extension. It's essentially a connectivity project. We have two mains that dead-end in very close proximity to each other, one being at the end of Bow and Arrow Mobile Home Park and the other at Hampton Lane inside the Waterford subdivision. We took a look at this project using our hydraulic model that we've developed in the last two years and evaluated it. The connectivity of these two lines is 300 or so feet. It will add additional fire flow capacity throughout that area, particularly in the southern part of the Waterford subdivision, and it should also, because it will loop-feed that area, it will turn the water over in the main that's on the Indian Mounds Road and should improve water quality there as well. Bids were taken for this project, the low bidder was TJ Lyle and Company at $45,400, and would recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Bob.
The first up, we have a manhole rehab project, and I believe Rebecca's going to pull up a video for you. If you want to see what we're spending $100,000 on manholes, in this video, the only water you should see should be coming out of that green pipe and flowing through the big hole in the bottom. You can see it's cascading around the joints of this manhole. This was taken over a week after one of our big rains. When we first found this, water was shooting in at 360 degrees, and it looked like a sinkhole draining a lake. As you can imagine, that's a problem. So that's what this work is doing. This is actually on the interceptor system. These are our very large diameter trunk sewers, 24 inches and larger. We took bids on this work, the low bid was mechanical jobbers at a price of $96,250. Would recommend this for your approval. The reason really anyone should care about this is what you see there is infiltration. That's water that we have to handle, that's water that we have to pump, water that we have to treat, and capacity gone in a pipe that we receive no revenue for. And we get rid of this stuff, we are actually creating capacity. And that is, that is big dollars in our benefit to do so, and you will see quite a few of these projects coming in here because it's our intention to really go to war with this type of problem over the next few years.
Okay. Any other, any questions or discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, next item, Bob.
This is, it's essentially the same type of a job, just on our collection sewers. Collection sewers are smaller diameter sewers, they're what you might find in your neighborhood. They are not as deep, they are not as high volume, they are not in as bad a shape because the larger sewers have gases in them that cause structural problems. Essentially, a collector sewer is a little easier to rehab for those reasons. Again, bids were taken for doing this work. Video Industrial Services was the low bid for the 50 manhole quantity that we gave them. Their bid was $37,500. I believe in your packages, you see the bids actually have unit pricing in them. We budgeted $60,000 for this project, so I would ask for a not-to-exceed authorization in that amount, 60,000, and we will just add manholes at those unit prices to do as many as we can for that $60,000. So ask for your approval of that request.
Thank you. Any discussion? And I heard the request, if a motion could be, kind of not to exceed.
Motion to approve with not to exceed $60,000 amount.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Your final one, Bob.
Last up, we have a need to purchase some equipment at the wastewater plant. I think a lot of folks are familiar with the gearbox problems that we've had over the last year, 18 months. uh, in, in tearing into those boxes and really doing a post-mortem on what caused them to fail. Uh, one of the issues addressed is internal rust in the box itself. The, the gearbox is only about half full of oil, and what we have is a problem with condensation in those boxes. We buy these heaters and we heat the box to drive the condensation off. Then that should alleviate the rusting problem and all the damage that that causes. Uh, we took bids for the heating elements themselves. We, we need thirty-three of these things. The low bid there was motor and gear engineering at forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Because we have never used heaters before, there are no electrical circuits to power these things. So we'll, we will also need wiring in order to make this a functional system. For that, we took a, uh, requested a bid from Fox Systems, and they provided a, uh, bid not to exceed forty thousand dollars to do all of that, all of that work. So I would ask for an authorization for both of these companies. Uh, again, forty thousand, three fifty-nine for the heating elements, the hardware, and then forty thousand for the electrical work. So a grand total of eighty thousand, three fifty-nine.
Thank you. Any questions for Bob on this? And if you would, please counsel a motion for the approval of the purchase of the item, and then also, uh, just put those both into one motion if you'll just designate that you're approving both the purchase of the heaters and the electrical work to be done to install those.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the aerator gearbox heaters, both the purchase and the electrical installation.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Uh, Don, you've got the next two. Mr. Hassett Brock, actually, the next three.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, the electric department needs to order, uh, wire for, uh, a loop feed to the Highland Seventy-Five Industrial Park. And this wire will, will, uh, be used to also provide backup, uh, for both floor and for both speed. And, uh, the, the, uh, we put out for bit- three bids, and, uh, low-cost bidder was Erby, and, uh, it's twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven feet of wire, and the total price, the low bid price was ninety-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. And this is a, uh, we're recommending that we, we take the low-cost bid on the wire, and, uh, this is a budgeted capital item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Don.
Okay, the, uh, we need to purchase a transformer to replace the, the one that was used to, uh, supply power for Aldi Grocery Store. And when I come to you to make a request, that means, uh, that we've added new load, so that's, that's a good thing. Uh, we're, we're glad to have Aldi in our community. Uh, we, uh, we had three bids, and, uh, Anextor was the low bid, uh, for seven thousand and sixty-two dollars. And, uh, they, they had the lowest price and the lowest total ownership cost. And again, this is, uh, we're, we're recommending that, uh, we, we take the low bid price on this transformer, and, uh, this is also a budgeted item.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to accept the low bid.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Okay, again, we need to, uh, purchase a one thousand, uh, a larger transformer. Uh, we had a customer that had a transformer need at, uh, Gulf Coast Recycling. They moved in at sixty-three Industrial Drive, and, uh, we need to purchase a transformer to go back in our, uh, stock. And we had five bids, and Erby was the low-cost bidder at thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And, um, we're re- recommending that, uh, we use the low-cost bidder, uh, and make the purchase.
Here, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Don, you're, you're absolutely correct. We've been so fortunate in getting new industries. How many transformers do we, are there, I know there's different sizes, but how many do we keep in stock? I mean, can we stock up and be ready for some of these, or is it specific?
That's, uh, what we try to do. We try to keep their, their various sizes according to the electrical need of, of that participant, and we try to keep one of each size in case a transformer should fail or we get a customer come to the community that needs, uh, needs power quickly. And we typically, uh, these transformers have from a, about a ten-week to about an eighteen-week delivery time. So we're trying, we're, we're constantly, when we, when we know we have one that we're gonna use, we try to go ahead and order, uh, to replenish our inventory.
So when a project comes online, then, then you know about it, and you're able to
Right.
make sure replacement's on the way.
Right. The customer wouldn't understand having to wait eighteen weeks.
Neither would we. Any other questions? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Porter, you've got the next three, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council. As you recall, a few weeks or a few months ago, the city hired a IT company, Intervive, to do a security assessment for the city operations to see where areas may be vulnerable. A couple of things they recommended. The first one is networks auditing software. It's basically audits, monitors, uh, who is logging into that, mainly making any changes to our server. The cost of this item is sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. I recommend for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The next item is a storage array and hard drives. Uh, again, this is a, now, the recommended item. It goes along with the networks auditor. Need to have some storage drives to, uh, log that equipment in there. The combination of these two purchases is five thousand, six hundred, seventy-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
If there's any discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Dan.
The last item is the Fortinet Firewalls and Logging Device. Uh, the current item we have at Cook Street is end of life and needs to be replaced. This is a new updated unit, and Stephen Greer was able to, uh, get a better price than what was listed in your packet. It's a total price of fifty-three thousand dollars. I recommend for your approval.
Okay. Once again, if there's no discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a purchase of a ultraviolet disinfection system for our senior aquatic center. Uh, this will, uh, give our pool, uh, better quality of water and, uh, save us, uh, from, uh, some chemical costs for, for chlorine. Uh, the, uh, we received, uh, bids, and we are recommending the, the low bid from Neptune Benson, an ETS unit, uh, at a not-to-exceed cost of thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is include some electrical work, and we may be able to mitigate some of that cost. But, uh, you know, just that not-to-exceed price, and this is a, a budgeted item, and this is a copy of the unit, uh, or a picture of the unit there. It's a stainless steel unit. We're able to hook on to our existing filter system, uh, and incorporate this, and also we would be able to isolate this if we have problems, uh, and also changing the bulbs in this unit.
What kind of warranty, Greg?
Uh, it has a... It has a one-year warranty, and then the, the bulbs are changed every, uh, twice a year.
Can we do that in-house?
Uh, yes, ma'am, changing the bulbs. Yes, well, we, we will do that.
Okay. Any other discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And you've got one more, Greg.
Uh, yes, Sir Mayor. This is a, uh, we took, uh, uh, pricing for, uh, for a reel mower, which is what we use to, uh, uh, to cut off our, our forty acres of athletic fields. Uh, we have, uh, we have three units, uh, to, uh, we're replacing one unit. Uh, our, our unit we're replacing still has a good frame, so I took prices for a complete unit and then pricing just to furnish, uh, three gang units using our frame. And I'm going with the, the low bid from Mitchell Real Works of Rome in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. It's a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Chief Carter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I respectfully bring forth to you tonight a budgeted item, and this is for the replacement of two self-contained, uh, breathing apparatus. Uh, total cost per unit, which includes a tank, the harness, and the facepiece is five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and seventeen cents per unit. We're requesting to purchase two, as we've budgeted for a total price of ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our financial report. Mr. Reinhart.
I'm, well, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be discussing the, uh, financial report for February two thousand seventeen and comparing it to two thousand, uh, February two thousand sixteen. And the general fund revenues have decreased over last February by nine and a half million dollars. This, again, is due to the school system paying off the bonds early. Expenses also decreased, and they, they decreased by ten point two million dollars. Three areas of, uh, revenue I look at on a monthly basis in the general fund, local office and sales tax. We finally have an increase over the last year by eleven hundred dollars. Police fines and forfeiture have a decrease of about fifty-three thousand dollars, and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase of about sixty-nine thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last February by one point five million dollars. Expenses increased by three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. This is due to increased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. And the gas fund revenues increased over last February by one point six million dollars. Expenses increased by one point one million dollars, and this is due mainly to increased cost of purchase gas. Excuse me. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. This is due mainly to decreased cost of electricity and decreased capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last February by fifty-six thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and this is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Uh, we are, as a side note, still expecting our stormwater fund to have some month funds come in, uh, to us from the GMA for the, for the lease pool. We've, we have a, sending the paperwork, and they're a little on the slow side of getting it back to us. Solid waste fund revenues increased over last February by fifty thousand dollars, and expenses increased by fifty-four thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased, and increased capital expenses. Again, the solid waste fund, we're running on a little bit of deficit. We are still expecting money to come in from GMA for a lease pool purchase. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last February by twenty-nine thousand dollars, and expenses have decreased by a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And this is due to decreased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. One side note, or one further note, um, I think Mr. Grove usually talks about this, but since he's not here, I'll do it instead. The cash position, uh, unrestricted cash has increased over last, uh, over January, and the restricted cash also increased. Both of these are positive sign for the economy and the overall departments holding back on what they're spending.
Okay.
That is my report for the evening.
Any questions for Tom on the financial report? Seems you're looking good. Don't have to shoot the messenger this time.
I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there are some items, uh, that need to come before council before we leave. Is there anybody here from the public that has something to address with further business? Good. A few items of note, uh, want to share. First of all, uh, wanna, just getting the record. Janice Brown, longtime employee, uh, passed away, uh, last, uh, I guess, I guess it's almost close to two weeks ago now, but had her service this past Saturday. Just wanted to recognize her and her longstanding service to the city. And I know that she was great friends with many people that worked with the city and those relationships, and I just wanted to, to note her service and, uh, and, uh, pass all my condolences to, uh, all of our members of the city family that lost a good friend. I count myself among those. Secondly, uh, Mr. Lovell, I asked Mr. Lovell earlier today, I know a lot of people had their day rearranged by a train that had stopped over the tracks, and, uh, I think anybody that's frustrated needs to know that the city council shares that frustration and do every single time that that happens. I asked Mr. Lovell to pull, uh, an ordinance that does exist in, in our city ordinances regarding blocking crossings, and, uh, it does say, as Mr. Lovell was able to pull for me, section nineteen-three says that it shall be unlawful to obstruct any street crossing within the corporate's, uh, limits with any freight cars or train for a longer time than ten minutes with the train stopped, unless a longer time shall be necessary to enable it to perform its duties as a common carrier. Uh, Mr. Lovell, what is the maximum fine that we can incur under this ordinance?
Uh, thousand dollars per incident, per violation.
Okay. What, I mean, you say per violation. Is it violation every ten minutes? Is it a...
Um, not every ten minutes, but it would be a violation in, in this instance. I fortunately was not downtown when this was happening, but I understand they did block more than one crossing.
Sounds correct.
So if there were, say, two crossings blocked, that would be a potential fine of up to two thousand dollars.
Well, well, given that this fine, uh, that this train, uh, by witness accounts and people monitoring it, uh, was stopped downtown from twelve-ten, uh, PM to two-thirty PM roughly this afternoon, um, council, we talked about, I talked with each of you about this, about a thousand dollar fine, but if it's per incident, um, unless there's any significant objection, we don't need to vote on it. But I'm gonna ask the, uh, the city to enforce this ordinance and send them CSX a fine of three thousand dollars for their actions or lack thereof this afternoon. So if we can, uh, start the process with that, I'd appreciate that.
I'll do that.
We need to do that. Thank you. Um, and again, this decision is made amongst everybody up here in council. It does create a public safety, uh, potential crisis, uh, not just because the train is across the tracks, but because you've got vehicles that are, are stopped, and if, if fire, police, and ambulance need to get somewhere over the bridges and they're, they're gunked up, um, you know, it, it, it makes it impossible for our, for our city public safety folks to do their job. And, uh, so, uh, hopefully, I know three thousand dollars won't seem like much to them, but, uh, but I do think we've got a responsibility. We've got it on the books, so we guess we just need to start informing, uh, enforcing it and, uh, start going from there. So thank you, council, for, uh, for your unanimous support of that. Uh, you'll also notice, uh, last item tonight to discuss, um, our good friend, fellow council member, Lindsey McDaniel hasn't been with us the last few meetings. Uh, spoke with him roughly, uh, two, three weeks ago, and, um, I, I did get a, I spoke with him yesterday, as recently as yesterday, and I have a letter to read from, from Lindsey, and, uh, it reads that after several discussions with my family, I've decided to submit this letter of resignation from the Cartersville City Council, effective June first of two thousand and seventeen. I feel that this decision is in the best interest for all and will allow me to focus more on some personal matters that have taken priority. I will always cherish the friendships we've established over the last thirteen-plus years, and being a part of the decision-making process for the city will also be missed. However, I'm confident that my replacement will make an immediate positive impact once appointed. Please understand that I'm thankful and grateful for having had this opportunity, and the city of Cartersville is good hands under your direction and leadership. I look forward to seeing many of your future accomplishments, and remember, I am only a phone call away. Regards, Lindsey McDaniel, Jr. Having been aware of, uh, this situation over, uh, the last couple of weeks, that he, he was pondering this and, uh, and making this decision, uh, the city council by ordinance, or I guess by our charter, does have the, uh, the responsibility or the ability to, to appoint someone to fill his term, and that's what we've decided to do. We have a, a process that's, that's in place, um, and members of the media, you'll get a copy of this if you don't already. Well, there's going to be an applicant, there's an application, uh, for the position for city council members, uh, for that city council member. This is a vacancy in Ward Four, um, and there's a number of requirements. I won't go through all of them, but obviously you must be a U.S. citizen, you must be a resident of Ward Four, and be twenty-five years of age, and be a qualified registered voter, uh, in Cartersville. Uh, and you all must also be an bona fide resident of the city of Cartersville continuously for at least one year. There are other items, and they're outlined on this application. As part of this application, um, which, again, will be made available on our website, and it will also be made available in the city clerk's office... will also be made available in the city clerk's office, which is on the second floor of this building during regular business hours, these applications are to be filled out and returned to the clerk's office no later than noon on Friday, May the 12th. And from there, council will have a, an opportunity to review these applications. We are more than likely going to have a called city council meeting to go over or have a presentation of the applicants. That will take place prior to our May 18 scheduled city council meeting. And with the intent of on May 18, making a decision amongst council as to who that appointee would be, we would then have that person sworn in to city council at our first meeting in June. I think that is, I don't know the exact date on that, but it would be our first Thursday in June, which would be obviously right as the resignation of Lindsey becomes effective. So again, the information for the application and all the requirements of that will be at cityofcartersville.org on our website or available at the city clerk's office, which is on the second floor of this building during regular business hours. Lindsey stepped into this position as a replacement, stepped up, served our city with honor. He's a dear friend of all of ours, and we'll miss him. But it's, he didn't talk an awful lot, but when he did, we all knew to listen. So we'll wish him continued health improvement and that we'll have an opportunity for him to get back here to a council meeting at a later date that we can, we could honor him properly for his time, dedication, and service and contributions to our city. Any other business that needs to come for the city tonight?
Yes, Mayor and Council, but this Lindsey is the employee service awards at Dale Hales Park.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions or comments or business? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned. Stay go.